Good evening. The meeting will come to order. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. Madam Clerk, could you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk’s office in preparation of the Council Annual Meeting Notice dated December 30, 2021, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room.
Thank you. Could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Allen here. Ms. Hairston.
Here.
Dr. Levine.
Here.
Mr. Miniger.
Here.
Ms. O’Sullivan.
Here.
Mr. Barton.
Present.
President Fox.
Here. Okay, moving on to the Pledge of Allegiance. I’d like to invite the Summit Football Team and coaches and whoever else is here with them to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you please read the notice regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
A closed-session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised, the council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HGTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the city clerk@cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, please limit your comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda, or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, moving on to approval of minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of regular and closed session for October 6?
No move.
I’ll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, Council President, will you be abstaining?
I will be abstaining because I wasn’t here as I believe—
I will be abstaining.
Thank you. Okay. All right. So, the motion carries, and then we’ll move on to reports. Madam Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Welcome especially to the football crew. I’m very happy to see you all here. I would like to share three opportunities to support organizations in Summit. Please consider buying a brick paver that will be added to a walkway at the new fire headquarters. Money raised from the brick paver sales will be used to furnish workout and on-duty living rooms—for our firefighters. Please go to cityofsummit.org/donate to participate. As you know, I feel very strongly about our firefighters, and as you’ve heard me say before, they run into peril when we’re all running away. But what we can do to make their time while they’re waiting to serve us more friendly, easy, I think is worthwhile. So, please, I hope you will consider donating. Please also consider donating to the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad’s fundraising drive to support the vitally important free services these volunteers provide to our community. Learn more about the squad and donate now at summitems.org. And again, the squad runs solely on donations. The city does not give them money. In fact, they save the city money. So, whether we like it or not, probably all of us at some point are going to need the help of the squad. So, I hope everyone, again, is generous. And finally, Summit Police Department, Fire Department, and both police and fire unions are working together to raise awareness for Police Officer Karen Sowers, who needs a life-saving kidney donation. More information on how to help is located at the city website at cityofsummit.org. The Summit Police Athletic League and Summit Department of Community Programs are hosting the annual Halloween Parade on Saturday, October 29, from 2:45 to 5:00 p.m. The parade will leave from 25 to Forest Avenue. Participants are asked to line up at 2:45. The parade will depart at 3:00 and arrive at the Village Green. Attendees can enjoy music, entertainment, and snacks on the Village Green from 3:00 to 4:15. During this time, individuals will be invited to walk across the main stage for the costume contest. The winners will be announced at 4:15 p.m. Prizes will be awarded for first, second, and third place in the following categories: most 2022 relevant, scariest, cutest, best group, most original, mayor’s choice, and best overall. Music and entertainment will continue until 5:00 p.m. On a personal note, my four-year-old granddaughter said she’s going to be a witch, but she wants to be a mean witch, doesn’t want to be a nice witch. I don’t know what that means. And the always fun trick-or-treating in the downtown is from 2:30 to 4:00 p.m. on Monday, October 31. Participating businesses will have a sign in the window. I hope everyone will have a safe and fun Halloween. Halloween safety tips from the Summit Police Department are available on the City of Summit NJ YouTube channel. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And now, on to Michael Rogers for the City Administrator’s Report.
Thank you, Council President. Good to be back.
Good to have you back.
Good to be back. Just to give a quick update on the New Jersey American Water Project, there’s some upcoming work that I just want to mention. So, this is the work that’s being done on Morris Avenue between Kent Place Boulevard and Lafayette Avenue. Crews will be working on mains and services this week on Morris Avenue between Kent Place Boulevard and Edgar Street and between Lafayette and Lincoln Avenue. Work will continue to be completed between 8:00 p.m. and 5:00 a.m., Monday through Friday. The contractor expects project work to be complete by October 31, weather permitting. Please contact New Jersey American Water at 1-800-272-1325 with any questions. Next item, Summit Free Market will be open for an additional weekday event on Thursday, October 27, from 1:30 to 3:30 p.m. at the transfer station located at 40 New Providence Avenue. And then, the next Saturday event will be on November 12, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And then, finally, the deadline to renew resident parking and transfer station permits online at cityofsummit.org/parking is October 31. Permits are required for residents to park in municipal parking lots and garages to use the municipal transfer station. New permits are valid from November 1, 2022, through October 31, 2023 at the moment. For assistance, please email parking@cityofsummit.org. And that’s all I have for this evening. Council President, thank you.
Thank you. And we have a special announcement from our clerk.
Today—or tonight—is the last night to register to vote. If anyone hasn’t yet registered for the general election on November 8, my staff is upstairs in the City Clerk’s office until 9 o’clock tonight. So, please go ahead. There are forms upstairs, and we welcome you to come up.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I had a few items as well. The city is actively seeking volunteers from the community to serve on several of its boards and commissions. Each November, mayor, rater, and members of the council begin the annual process of reviewing volunteer applications and appointing new board members. Terms vary from one to five years of service with an opportunity for reappointment. The city keeps applications active for two years. The deadline to apply is November 18, 2022, and residents can apply online. More information and a list of boards and commissions is available at cityofsummit.org. Please contact the Clerk’s Office at 908-273-6400 with any questions. Have you been enjoying the Fall in Love with Trees series from the Summit Shade Tree Advisory Committee and Reeves Reed Arboretum? The next and final session will be held online and in person at the Arboretum on Thursday, October 20, and it’s entitled “Restoring the American Chestnut in the Eastern U.S.”. On-site space is limited, and reservations are encouraged. The event is free to attend. Visit reevesreedarboretum.org to learn more about the program and to register now. Finally, applications are now open for federal student loan forgiveness. Learn more about eligibility for debt relief and apply now at studentaid.gov. And finally, I wanted to clarify a few key points about the status of the Broad Street West redevelopment. Right now, I want to emphasize there is no proposed plan for any building or buildings in Sub District 3 or elsewhere. The city has asked the redevelopers to present a smaller proposal that complies with the redevelopment plan and the master plan. That proposal will have fewer stories and units and will have parking onsite. We are awaiting that proposal. As the financial negotiations will derive what gets built, the Broad Street West Advisory Committee members have been appointed to address the finance aspects. The city is waiting for information from the redeveloper for the committee to review. In addition, our financial advisor is assembling information for that review process as well. Design is not part of the subcommittee purview, but there will be conversations with the community about design that will take place over the next few months. Residents can expect a presentation on next steps in the process by topology and city staff at an upcoming meeting, and there will also be information about—from the city’s Affordable Housing Attorney explaining our obligations under the Affordable Housing settlement. The presentation will also include background information on redevelopment and its potential benefits and challenges. And at some point in early 2023, we hope to have a community meeting. So, stay tuned for specific dates as we get closer. And with that, I’m going to move on to presentations. So, our first presentation is—we have the fire headquarters update. I was thinking it was a presentation. Come on up, Chief.
Senate President, appreciate it. Once again, I’d just like to thank the mayor and other fellows for our foundation for doing all the good work on the fundraising. And the public, the Brooks Campaign, it’s been a great success so far, so we appreciate anybody who generously donated so far. So, thank you very much. I’m just going to go over a quick—quick finances. So, we’re a little just about 20% into our payments. We have our initial budget, some contract. We made nine pay applications. There’s certain milestones the contractor has to meet, and when they prove that they met those milestones, a pay application is presented to the group. The architect looks at it. I look at it, and once everything is in line, we submit a pay application. That pays the contractor for the work that’s done to date. That’s going well. Our contingency budget, we’ve had a lot of potential change orders in place for the last couple of meetings, so now we’re kind of narrowing those down. So, on the contingency, the list of what we spent so far out of our contingency, our contingency is money we put aside that’s beyond the contract amount, the bid award. So, New Jersey Transit, we got some insurance ready to get. New Jersey Transit still is a big number for us. That’s something we didn’t initially have a budget for, but it’s a beginning of our contingency, and that’s pretty much any time we’re working within their right-of-way or any equipment that has the potential to foul their electrical equipment, they have to have representatives on scene to make sure everything goes according to plan. So, we have to spend money for that. And then, the concrete here, hardwood finishes, we had to add some additional rigid insulation to one of the walls, and we had unforeseen stormwater retention basin that we unearthed when we were doing some excavating. So, I think the November 1st council meeting, we’ll be bringing forward a couple of change orders, resolutions that we’ll be asking the council to approve. So, that’s it for the change order to this date. We also’ve been—our change is looking a couple months down the road to make sure that we have everything in line. There are some material issues that come up from time to time, so we’re just working with our project group to make sure that we’re kind of staying ahead of the game as far as ordering materials and any other item that may have been overlooked. So, far, we’re looking at pretty good in terms of what we’re looking at down the road. To quickly cover pictures, all the structural steel is completed. It’s all in place. The crane is off the site now. They’re starting to work on more lightweight steel. They’ll start putting on the roof of the building on pretty soon. This is another picture of all the structural steel. The program they use called Procore, it had a lot of pictures. It’s also a way of documenting construction. They take a couple hundred pictures a day, and so we have to go back and kind of look at something. It’s good where they document. A lot of these pictures are taken off that program. So, all the steel done, this is the steel decking over the steel. They have corrugated steel decking. This is the first floor to debate you’re looking at, looking towards Summit Avenue. That’s all installed and ready to go. This is the wall on the railway tracks. So, in between on the exterior of the building, in between all the steel, structural steel, there’s all cinder block. That’ll all go fill in cinder block, and then over that will be a brick at some point. So, that’s all completed. This is the top floor, over that corrugated. They’re getting ready to pour concrete. Going to have the first pour concrete next week, so by end of next week, all the concrete layers should be poured in the building. So, that’s kind of a big milestone for us. And it’s another view of looking into—the this would be the training education part, looking into the apparatus base. And it’s another view of one of the other sections of one of the training mezzanines with the corrugated steel. And this is a projected—every two weeks, our group meets, the contractors, the architects, and our internal firehouse. We meet, we grow over schedule for the following two weeks. So, this just outlines—I know it’s kind of hard to see, but pretty much—
Did you read those dates to us? Because I can’t see them.
I’m sorry?
Would you mind reading those dates?
Sure, yeah, yep. So, what basically is, the top part has what’s been completed. All the structural steel has been completed. They started the walls, the brickwork in between the steel along the railway tracks. And then, coming up next week, they’re going to start to pour all the concrete floors. That’ll all get completed. And the goal is to have everything completed by end of next week, as far as concrete goes. And they’ll start to work on. Then, they’ll continue to mason, will continue to add cinder block and all the exterior to walls, get—the goal is to get everything wrapped up sometime in December, dried in. And it’ll also start to be, once the concrete is poured, they can start to put on more steel up in the roof lines. You talk to more roof lines to the building in a couple of weeks. And that is it for the presentation. I’m happy to answer any questions everybody has.
Any questions from members of council? Questions from the public? All right. I think—thank you very much, Chief. This is very exciting.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay. So, with that, we’ll now move on to the ceremonial proclamation.
Can I ask, please, Coach Costabos and members of the alumni association to join me at the podium? Whoever would like to join, come on up. Mr. Curial, come on.
Whereas this year marks the 130th year of Summit High School football, whose first season started in 1892. Over that time, the Hilltoppers have won over 600 games and 17 state championships. Eight wins came prior to the state playoff era, and eight were playoff titles. And whereas Summit shared the North Jersey Group III title with Roseell Park in 1928, it won North Jersey Section 2, Group III championships in 1954, shared with Linden; 1959; 1962, shared with Milburn; 1963; 1971; 1972; 1973; 1976; 1980; 2012; 2013; and 2018. Boy, those 70s must have been fun.
They were, I remember.
The Hilltoppers also won four championships in North Jersey Section 2, Group 2 in 1998; 1993; 1994; and 2009. Summit has won or shared in more than 30 conference championships in the suburban Northern Hills, Watch Hung, Iron Hills, and Midstates Conferences. And whereas, the Hilltoppers have been undefeated eight times—1928; 1963; 1972; 1973; 1993; 2009; 2012; and 2013—and have had an additional 14 seasons where they lost only one game. And whereas Summit has had 11 head coaches over their storied history, Hall of Famer Howie Anderson set the standard of excellence with 186 wins in his 31 seasons and seven state championships. Coaches Jim Benedict, John Liberato, and Kevin Costabos each have two state championships. And whereas, eight Hilltoppers have professional football experience, with young Michael Badgley currently kicking for the Chicago Bears. And whereas, besides the success on the field, Summit football always puts the players’ safety first. They have been a step ahead of surrounding towns and across the state when it comes to concussion safety. As of today, each Summit youth football player has a microchip built into their helmet so that any sudden impact to a player’s head can be detected. Each Summit team has a designated coach or trainer on the sidelines with a device that sounds off if a player has taken a blow to the head. All helmets have identification numbers inside, and the players’ last names are stored into this device so that they can be quickly identified. Now, therefore, I, Nora Rater, Mayor of the City of Summit, do hereby proclaim that October 15, 2022, be recognized as the 130th anniversary of Summit football in the City of Summit, and I ask all residents to join me in extending congratulations and appreciation to the coaches and the team for the pride they have bestowed upon our city. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Summit to be affixed this 18th day of October in the year 2022. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Nice work.
Thank you for coming. Okay. And now, it’s time for public comments. So, maybe we’ll just give these folks a minute to—you know, for those who want to leave, and then you can come on up. Come on up. Please, when you come up, please state your name and address, and I’m going to ask people to stick to three minutes, please.
Can I put this down?
Oh, sure. Yeah. And you probably want to move the microphone over to you. Yep.
No, it’s fine.
It won’t.
You won’t break it.
All right. Am I heard?
Yes. Perfect. Very good.
My name is Jody Perrone.
My official name is Doris, but I—I spoke about this. And is that right? Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
All right. I live on 158 Hillcrest Avenue in Summit.
Welcome.
Okay. Thank you. And so, that—that’s—
Yep. Now, you can make your statement.
All right.
Or questions, whatever.
I do want to say, my maiden name was McKenna, and I’m really glad that there is an Irish person before me because—I think you’re the only Irish one here, right?
Nope. Nope. All four of my grandparents were born in Ireland.
Well, what was your maiden name, though?
Clancy.
Clancy. Oh, good. Okay. So, anyway, but that’s not what I’m here for. Anyway— I didn’t take it. Nope. I’m not really good at getting in front of people, so—
That’s fine.
You have to bear with me.
We’re very patient here. Take your time.
Okay. My first question has to do—can you hear me?
Yes, we can. We’ll let you know if we can’t.
Okay. My first question has to do with the thing that—about the update that you gave about Toll Brothers.
Okay. Well, ask your questions, and then we’ll address everything at once, okay?
Okay. My question is, do you know—if Summit will know more about the update on their redevelopment before the election? Do you have a deadline for their resubmitting?
Just ask all your questions. Is that your only question?
Oh, all of them?
Yeah. No, because we’re not going to do it that way. You ask your questions, and then we’ll respond.
Oh, okay. All right. And is that better? No?
It’s fine.
Okay. So, my other question has to do with the Affordable Housing. I’m a layman, really, and I don’t understand how all that works. And I’m—I would like to have some very direct answers to my questions. Number one, how many Affordable Housing units does Summit presently have? My calculation is that we have some 236 already, plus the ones from Marco Polo, The Habitat, and—I don’t know, maybe there are more. But I would—I would like to know how many actual units that we have already. And the next question is—and those in progress included in that figure—what is the current required mandate quota as it stands now? Not disregarding the Broad Street West. And how much—I know it’s population-based, but I’m wondering, based on the current population, what is the quota according to the state mandate for the actual present according to the population? And what percentage? How—how—I know we have to do 20%, I think. Correct me if I’m wrong. I know—I think that you have to do like a fifth of the—any new occupancies have to be Affordable Housing. So, all in all, I’d like to know how we stack up with all those things very specifically.
Some of those questions are easier to answer than others. I can definitely tell you the percentage of Affordable Housing. If five or more units, 15% for rentals, 20% for sale.
And what was your first figure? I’m sorry.
15% for rental units. If it’s five units or more, it has to—there—15% have to be rentals have to be affordable. 20% for sale have to be affordable.
Are there—there apartments then being for sale, or is it uniquely rentals in the proposal?
I don’t know what proposal you’re referring to.
Well, any proposal.
It’s—you know, if a developer builds five units, if they’re doing for-sale units, they have to do 20% Affordable.
So, the first proposal that you put back to them and asked for a second—
You’re talking—
How many of those apartments then were for rent, or how many were—
You’re talking about the first Broad Street West?
Right.
Okay. It was 21 units that would have been Affordable units, plus seven workforce units, which doesn’t count in our Affordable number.
Right.
And that was 15%. So, I think on some of these others—I’m trying to think of the best way to handle this. Michael, do you want to—do you want to take a crack at answering?
I’m not even going to begin to take a crack at it. I would—I would defer to our Affordable Housing Attorney and our planners to—
Right.
Who we are—because there’s a lot of questions about Affordable Housing—
Yeah.
We feel it’s probably time to readdress the Affordable Housing issue, and we—I don’t want to give you pieces of information about the Affordable Housing. I think it would be—
No, I just had very specific figures that I liked.
These are very difficult. It’s not that straightforward.
It’s not an easy topic to understand, so I—
Then, you can’t tell us how many Affordable Housing units are presently in Summit?
Depends how you count them.
I don’t have that number in front of me. That’s why. There’s a—
That’s why you haven’t—so, that’s why there hasn’t been a very specific answer to these questions in the past.
Because I don’t want to give you the wrong number.
Pardon?
You’ve asked a specific question. I don’t have a specific answer.
So, you don’t know.
I don’t have the answer for you. I don’t want to just blurt out a number.
Right. So, that’s—okay.
If there is—if you go to the city website, there is a page that—
No, I understand all that. I’ve been referred to the city website, and I—I—I really want a straight answer. So, the answer is that the council really does not know.
No, that’s—
That’s not correct. That’s not correct.
There are a lot of—there are different ways of counting this.
No, but there—
I’m going to let—
All right. So, how many—how many Affordable—how many Affordable housing—how much Affordable housing is in the senior living? There are 195 units in the senior living. Are they all affordable?
It’s not 195, and—
So, can I— Yeah, go ahead.
Through you, Council President. So, there are—there are basically three different categories of what one might consider Affordable housing in Summit. There’s the Housing Authority, which manages the Chestnut Building across the street here. I think that’s fewer than 190. That’s 190. I think—I think—
Across the—right here?
Yeah. It’s about 140.
The Chestnut—
So, can I—can I finish my thought on this?
Yeah, but I want you to repeat something. I’m a little hard of hearing.
Sure. So, if you’re then looking at the other properties that are managed by—
I’m looking at—
So, the other properties that are managed by the Housing Authority include Glenwood Place and also Weaver—
Yes. How many units are there there?
And also Weaver Street. And so, altogether, I think that is close to 190, and we’ll get you exactly the number that that is. That is—those are all affordable units that are managed by the Summit Housing Authority.
Okay.
So, those are not units that count toward our state obligation for—
Why is that?
—constructing new Affordable housing. And part of the reason is because HUD money is involved, money from the federal government, but also because they have a preference that they are allowed to give to Summit residents. So, if you are a Summit resident who's applying to live in a Housing Authority property, you can get preferential treatment and moved up the list, as opposed to someone who is outside of Summit, applying to those properties. Then, the second group of affordable housing is the things that are managed by...
So, basically, can I just... So, you're really trying to attract people from outside of Summit?
No.
Is that the idea?
No. So, the purpose of the Housing Authority properties is for families and seniors who... With a preferential treatment toward those who live in Summit. The second group is housing that is managed privately by nonprofits. There's a number of units. I don't have the exact figure on that. That also does not count toward our obligation that we have to report to the state. That's just housing that's owned by nonprofits, and they decide how they want to afford that housing.
Why does that not qualify? That's really strange.
Because they have their own standards as to how they select people to live in it. And we have no say in how they do that.
Don't they apply for it?
They do. But those standards are set by that organization and not by the state government or any other government. And then, the third group is the group that... Of affordable housing that we are obligated to construct. And that is 50 new affordable units by 2025. And we have either under construction or having been constructed already, 17 units toward that 50-unit obligation. That's where we are now. But this is, as everyone up here has said, this is an extremely complicated subject that we will have our affordable housing attorney here to speak about in an upcoming council meeting.
All right. And those figures, have you included the affordable housing that's going up in the Marco Polo property?
There's... I'm not aware of any affordable housing on the Marco Polo property.
I was speaking to the owner of Marco Polo, and they said not... And I know that the community is up in arms because there's going to be affordable housing there. So...
Excuse me, ma'am. Is that in front of the zoning board or planning board? Because it had... I don't think they've applied yet, so we can't report it to the state until there's an application.
I think Toll Brothers is doing that, by the way. That's what I understand from Marco Polo owner.
I know about the Tier Connel property on, you know, those five houses on River Road, on Mars Avenue by River Road. And I know they are in front of the board right now with an approximately 46 units, is it right? Of seven of which will be affordable if they are approved. But I honestly don't know of anything at the Marco Polo that's, you know, in place and has been submitted to a board. And then, I just wanted to add one thing to Greg's, Councilman Vartan's comments. Back when we were trying to negotiate the settlement for Fair Share... With Fair Share Housing, they wanted us to take the preference for Summit residents away from the senior housing and Glenwood Place and Weaver Street. And they said, "If you take that preference away, we will let you count them towards affordable housing in Summit." But we felt, the board at the time, the council at the time, felt very strongly that we should give preference to Summit residents. We're not trying to attract outside residents. We wanted to take care of people that have raised their families here for years and wanted to stay in Summit. So, that's... Do I like the way that they did that? No. Of course not. But it was really important to us to give preference to Summit residents.
I understand. I understand. So, then, probably that figure of 17 goes up to, what, 30? What? Yeah, 34, right?
With what?
With the Tier Connel if they get approved.
That's 17 plus 7 would be 24, not 34.
Right. 24.
Right.
So, oh, 7 and 74. Yeah, 24. Excuse me. Okay. So, and so, the actual... The actual count in the senior living was how much you said that was affordable?
It's all affordable. But we'll have to get back to you on these numbers.
Oh, the whole... The whole of senior living is affordable?
Yes.
And you're not quite sure? I don't know how I came up with 195 units there. That's...
I think it's around 190-some for Chestnut, Weaver Street, and Glenwood Place, all combined.
But those are not Summit residents? Or they are senior?
They're all Summit residents, and it's all affordable.
Preference. Preference for Summit residents.
Summit residence preference, and they're affordable. But according to the law... What's the government has... The state has allowed fair share housing to establish, we are not allowed to count them toward our affordable number, even though they are, in fact, affordable.
All right.
It's crazy. It's a very complicated...
And the Glenwood is all affordable for just Summit residents? Is that it?
Summit residents get preference.
Preference. And how many of them actually are affordable?
They're all affordable.
They're all affordable.
But filling our quota?
That none of them are...
They don't count?
Because we get... Because we're giving Summit residents preference.
Oh, right. Okay. Okay. And Weaver Street, then? You said that's the same thing.
Same situation as the other two.
And so, none of them are really counted and affordable?
Correct.
As much as we argued and negotiated for well over a year.
Right.
No.
Right. Well, this is clarifying.
Good. Yeah, no, I'm glad. I'm glad.
Yeah. And Marco Polo may turn up with something, so that could be diminished. I know that... I think they're having like... Can you hear me? I do...
Yeah. Yeah.
I think they're having something like 12 units. I don't know how many...
You can't count on them till it's actually approved. And we have not... As far as... I don't think anyone knows about anything in front of...
Well, I think there was something on the internet showing it. There was a picture of it.
Well, just, you know, just because it's on the internet doesn't mean it's so. It's... It'll happen when they go to the zoning board or the planning board to seek approval.
Okay. And then, the Habitat. Are you counting? Are those... Those are definitely all affordable. And how many units is that?
It's 12.
12.
And we're counting those.
That's 12. And you counted that in your 15?
17.
Your 17 figure? So, that is 12. So, that's really it. Okay. So, the figure of affordable can go up a couple more by virtue of the Marco Polo properties. So, maybe we get three? And if we get to three, that brings 27. So, then, we would have 13 left?
20.
23.
23, yeah. Yeah, 23.
We can't speculate unless it's actually applied for.
Right. I understand.
I'm going to ask you to wrap up, please, because...
Okay. Well, I think... Basically, those were my big questions. And I just want to say, I think that this issue of Broad Street West is really at the crux of this election for Ward One. And although Mr. O'Sullivan has an Irish name, I am supporting Delia. And I do have to say that she has been under attack unfairly.
You know what? We're not going to talk about electioneering in the council chamber. It's not appropriate.
I know. I understand that. But I do think it's unethical, the political backbiting. And I didn't want to make that statement. And I'm ready to sit down. And I'm sorry if that object... Somebody objected to that. But I did think it needed to be said. I was very sorry to hear that and see it. And a lot of the things that she was attacked on are totally false. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next comment. Good evening, Ms. Gagnon.
So nice to see everybody here. Welcome, Dr. Levine.
Thank you.
So nice to have you here. Mr. Rogers, so nice to see you back. Dory Gagnon, 27 Bedford Road. Let's see. I have a couple of notes here. Okay. I'm going to try to say this in the nicest way because, off of Mrs. Perron, it's a little disturbing to hear Councilman O'Sullivan recent campaigns about his responsible idea floating around about the two buildings and the four stories approach for Broad Street West Sub District 3. Now, while we all... While the idea seems like a good one, it most certainly did not originate with Mr. O'Sullivan, as he's claiming. Mr. O'Sullivan, in fact, relentlessly supported the 480-foot-long, five-story behemoth that the developers proposed, and everyone opposed, especially residents for Summit. Anyone who's been following along with Broad Street West has the June 21 Communities Center meeting burned in their memory and knows that it was Mr. O'Sullivan, in fact, who read the prepared ordinance statement that's been given Summit even bigger behemoth than the one originally shown. To set the record straight, the two-story building idea was actually our residents for Summit paid professional planner, Carlos Rodriguez's idea, in his first presentation at our town hall on April 27. If you would like to, go back and watch our YouTube video presentation. After spending most of the time pointing out many ways which he proposed Sub District 3, ignoring the 2019 zoning plan, Carlos made many suggestions for a better approach. His idea was to use two buildings that were four stories high. This would solve few problems, namely, it would break up the 480-foot length. It would provide a mid-block cut through and would be more in scale with Summit. It was the residents hired planner, following months of me tirelessly pleading with council to listen, setting up a rally, setting up the town hall, who actually gave you guys the helpful idea. And speaking of mid-block cut-throughs, I have this helpful little board here for everybody to see and to remind you of. There's this Finger Lot here. There's this Finger Lot, and I call it the Finger Lot because we haven't really talked about the Finger Lot. Can you please update us and the residents of Summit about this Finger Lot? Is this still privately owned? At the summit... Another point. At the September 6 council meeting, when everyone had returned from the summer pause, Mayor Rades opened the meeting announcing that nothing would be built on Sub District 2. I was ecstatic. Thank you. That is the YMCA and the library lot. So, here's Sub District...
Ma'am, you have to address the council.
Sorry. Here is Sub District 2, right here. So, very excited. So, thank you. At later council meetings in September and October, and other residents also asked about Sub District 4, specifically me asking to remove Sub District 2 and Sub District 4, the one with City Hall and Vito Gallow, and why sub-districts can't be removed from the redevelopment area. We can see that it's not lighted, and City Hall and the senior complex are not going to be torn down. Very important are our senior residents in town. And I constantly say how I fight for the seniors. I fight for the elderly. In answer to our questions about removing Sub District 2 and 4 from the redevelopment area, we are told that ordinance amending the redevelopment plan would be done sometime in the future to make these changes. We understand the legal process of amending the redevelopment plan. However, given the history of promises by council regarding Broad Street West, we'd like to ask the council to give us some reassurance by passing a resolution now to promise to remove these two sub-districts. Again, Sub District 2 and Sub District 4. The resolution could be titled, "Resolution to Undertake Future Action", and very simply could state that Sub District 2 and 4 will be entirely removed from the 2019 plan. Our planner, Carlos Rodriguez, has also suggested this action because it provides public notice of something that you all have promised in meetings. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. No, Ms. Perron, we... Other people are waiting to speak.
But you didn't answer my question about what the deadline for the new proposal? If they're going to come... When it's coming out?
Mr. Rogers, do you want to take that one?
I think the specific question was before the election, which is November 8.
Yeah.
No, there won't be.
It won't be?
Will not.
Will not? So, we don't know what we're voting for?
No, you can't speak from back there because no one will be able to hear you speaking. And... Okay. Go ahead, Ms. DeCibio.
Hi. Good evening, council and Mayor Rades. Amy DeCibio, 1 Essex Road. I'd like to address council on three things: assumptions, accusations, and civility. Assumptions. Because you've seen me and others, you recognize, among the residents for Summit crowd, it appears some of you have made assumptions that the Broad Street West opposers are nothing but a bunch of disruptive Republicans. You are wrong. Regardless of what you think about the personal politics of some of our members, you need to enlighten yourselves by understanding that residents for Summit is a nonpartisan group and growing all the time. I believe it is you, council, that have turned this entire Broad Street West debacle into something it never should have been, political. I've heard that some of you believe last year's Andy Miniger-Bob Weck race was a referendum on this project, which is frankly just silly. You know this project was under wraps until the election was over. It never even showed the community a rendering until last February. It is you who work on this project in caucus. It is you who made Broad Street West political, not residents for Summit. Accusations. Several of you have made accusations that opposers of the building you all relentlessly supported are against affordable housing. Have you ever heard us once complain about too much affordable housing? Our concern has never been affordable housing. The grossly oversized and egregiously underparked behemoth has always been our problem. At one meeting this spring, council president allowed a community member to turn around, face the gallery right here in this chamber, and accuse the people who didn't agree with your project as redliners. He essentially called us racist, and you allowed it. It is shocking that you'd permit that, council president, when you've sharply reprimanded other speakers you've deemed opposers, some of them elderly even, for simply turning around to the crowd for support. Council president's recent social media post, written as an official of this city, accusing a Republican candidate for common counsel of lying, is beyond disbelief. It is unprofessional and unethical. Council president, you're an elected leader. This is Summit, for crying out loud, and we are all neighbors. I think many community members feel as if we've been living in an Orwellian novel around here for the last eight months. Even on the most basic information out there, you have tried to convince us that 2 plus 2 equals 5, but we've never called you liars. For months, you tried to convince us your building was 250 feet long, when it was clearly 480 feet long. But we didn't call you liars. You started telling us last winter that we needed to build that huge building because we need the money, yet you had just given us a tax cut right before the election. But we didn't call you liars. You insisted that the incredible parking issues would be fixed, even though with such a grossly oversized building, parking could never be properly fixed. But we didn't call you liars. At one point, you told us you'd reduce the density of that building, and you proceeded to show us an even larger building with actually less affordable housing. But we still didn't call you liars. All I can say is if you were sitting in the cheap seats over here on this side of the dais, wouldn't you be frustrated? Wouldn't you wonder what the heck was going on? Sadly, trust in our leadership. This council is deteriorating. The rules of engagement should not just be set by, but actually practiced by our city's leaders. Civility starts at the top. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Good evening, Delia Hamlet, 11 Brantwood. Good evening, council president. Welcome, Ms. Levine. Fresh any face. We're super excited. Michael, welcome back. Hope you're feeling well. I just had a few quick questions. So, who does own the Finger Lot? And I think it's important that we just answer one question at a time because for Ms. Perron, I think...
You know what? I'm running the meeting, Ms. Hamlet. You know what, I'm running the meeting, Ms. Hamlet. Ask the questions, we'll answer the questions.
Okay, because sometimes we don't get back to them. Okay, who owns the Finger Lot? And can you please explain why, I'm just having a hard time understanding with Sub District Three, and maybe this would be for Mr. Rogers, but why we started the redevelopment plan or Broad Street West without owning the Finger Lot? Maybe there's a really good answer. That would be my second question. And I guess my third comment would be, two weeks ago, council president Fox, you were not here, and Mr. Vartan stepped up to take the lead. He stepped up to take the lead, and I think it was a tough spot. I came up here and asked a few questions, but I didn't probe him because I gave him credit for taking on a new leadership role. In fact, as Mr. Vartan would probably, absolutely, he would absolutely agree to, a few days later, I sent him a note, and I said, hey, well done up there. He did a great job. Great job. But it was actually one of my friends who stood up here and also helped create a better dialogue for council. But I thought it was important, and I thought it was important that I recognized that. And I think you'll remember that a few weeks before that, we sat in an environmental meeting together. And I think at best count, there were six Republicans and six Democrats, which I was actually shocked at. I thought, wow, we're actually talking about the environment. I counted them. I have all the stats, I'm running for election. Six Republicans and six Democrats. And Ms. Fox, I sent you a note the day after, two days, I said, hey, Marjorie, it's nice to sit in a meeting with you without yelling and disagreeing. But I guess my question would be, is, after the attacks that I've received personally, and this has nothing to do with Mr. O'Sullivan, because they're certainly not coming from him, but the attacks that I have had from Summit marches on this week, turning a picture that I had opening my brand-new 53,000-square-foot fitness facility, which we just became profitable last week, and they turned my face, and they made me look like a Trump supporter because I had a flag on my shirt. To what point is this going to end? For last week, in fact, let me read your comments, Ms. Fox. I know I'm on the clock, but I'll finish it up. Delia Hamlet is basing her entire campaign on opposing the Broad Street West redevelopment project and lying about Danny's position on the project. All the while, Delia has advocating, spending taxpayer money to build the Village Green Two, which would result in higher taxes and decreased municipal services. This proposal would throw out all of the work done by many hundreds of residents on the master plan and ignores the wishes of the members of the community who have demanded a project that complies better with the master plan. Summit deserves better. It's just shocking. It's shocking that the leadership, and then the next day, Mr. Vartan sends a three-page article on how I would handle the city's finances. Why don't you guys ask yourselves these questions? I'm not even up there. Like, at what point? And by the way, the shirt that the Summit marches on, they had me in a picture of, it was actually of my buddy who died in war. Has nothing to do with Trump. I'm just not sure when it's going to end. I'm a mom. And this is not, this has nothing to do with Mr. O'Sullivan, because he's actually been absolutely respectful. But what I'm receiving from the council people who are endorsing candidates is beyond what local politics should be about. And then, that's all in closing. I just wanted to know who owned the Finger Lot and how we went forward with redevelopment, knowing that we didn't own that land.
Mr. Rogers, would you like to address the Finger Lot issue?
Sure. It's a private entity. I was trying to look for the exact name, but there's a private entity that owns the Finger Lot, still owns the Finger Lot. And the question about why the city didn't purchase that particular property owner or property, it goes for all of the other private properties in the redevelopment area. The city wouldn't buy every property in the redevelopment area. It's left to the designated redevelopers to negotiate with those property owners, private property owners. So that's been ongoing, hasn't been resolved at the moment. Things are sort of at, sort of, I won't say a standstill, but they have, there's a tenant that's in that building in the funeral home, so they're part of that discussion around the use of that ingress-egress point off of Broad Street. So it's still owned by the private property owner. There's been discussions and negotiations with the private property owner and the designated redevelopers. There is no, there has been no ownership transfer, so that hopefully answers your question.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments from members of the public? All right, so Mr. Bennett first, and then you, Mr. Nelson.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Rades, Madam President, members of council. You'll be very happy because I'm going to be very brief. I just want to add my endorsement to Ms. Gagnon's request that a resolution be passed sooner rather than later to remove Sub Districts Two and Four and take them off the table. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
Good evening, Mr. Nelson.
Good evening, council. How are you doing tonight? Mike, welcome back. Nice to see you. Glad you're doing well, and welcome to the council. I'm not a very political person at all, believe me, I'm not. But I just got a couple of questions about Broad Street West that kind of came up tonight listening to the previous speakers. If we don't own the Finger Lot, this is very, very simple. We don't own the Finger Lot right now, why did we design a building that included that? The council's supposed to represent us. It sounds like somebody was driving that project, which assumed the Finger Lot was going to be included. That's my take. I could be wrong. But, you know, if I buy a piece of property and my property is 50 by 150, I'm not going to build a house that includes my neighbor's property. So I'm kind of curious about that. And my other question was, well, my other, it's more of a statement. I've been coming to council meetings for a long time. There were six years where I didn't come because I was in a position where I couldn't. But I've never seen this kind of discourse between the public and council about this one saying this about that, and this one saying that about that other person. Little disappointed in all of us, both sides. You know, Summit's a great town, been here a long time. Never seen that in my entire life. There were certain councils that disagreed, but I've never seen statements in papers about opponents. Always been cordial, always been upfront. Face-to-face is the best. A little disappointed about that. You can take that for what you want to, but I find it a little disheartening that that's happening. Have a nice evening.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments? Good evening, Mr. Sartorius.
I never got to answer my question about why we decided to build.
I think Mr. Rogers answered that question.
I'll stay sort of specific to that, but the designated redevelopers were negotiating with that property owner. The property owner is well aware of that project and what was being proposed, so that would have happened before redevelopment agreement would have been, before this council for approval, that property would have been in contract with the redevelopers. So it would have been something that we would have had in place.
Go ahead, Mr. Sartorius.
Yeah, Steve Sartorius, 37 Tulip Street in Summit. Just a quick question from Mr. Vartan. You mentioned earlier that.
All questions have to be directed towards me.
Okay. To the council. Somebody on the council mentioned earlier that we are, Summit is required to construct 50 units of affordable housing by 2025. I mean, I'm not an expert. I know a little bit about it from having been involved with residents for Summit and Broad Street West. I thought it was actually a reasonable efforts requirement and not a hard and fast rule. In other words, if we, if we don't have 50 in place, you know, and we're making progress and doing our best, that prevents us from being sued into oblivion, right?
Not exactly. The language is Summit shall take all reasonable steps needed to achieve the goal. And I'll let Mr. Vartan answer if there's anything further.
I don't have a ton more to add through you, council president. I think, when you're looking at all reasonable efforts, that's a pretty subjective term, right? And I think that to a judge, to the Fair Share Housing Center, to our affordable housing attorney, to this, to members of the council, people will have a different opinion about what that means. But I think, speaking for myself, redevelopment of an area that's been included in our redevelopment plan and our master plan is certainly a reasonable effort. Yeah, so I think we are going to wind up back in some form of negotiation about affordable housing in 2026. And again, I am a huge advocate of us having our affordable housing attorney come in and speak with us about our obligation, the specifics of what it says, where we are, and what happens next from there. And it's my hope that that will happen very soon.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Ms. Peron, we have the policy, it's one comment per person.
Well, you want to say your comments? Is there anything that can be done to reverse the redevelopment plan, to put it back to a private developer? And what would that entail? I'm asking that on behalf of somebody. And my question, and my question is, I don't have a question, I have a suggestion. I think it would be, it's an opportunity to show some easy goodwill to the community. I'm following up on Ms. Gagnon and Mr. Bennett's suggestion that a resolution could be passed, a resolution for future action to remove Sub District Two from the redevelopment plan, and I would propose Sub District Four as well. Sub District Four is the building that we're sitting in right now, Vito Gallo Senior Complex, the 711 lot, Rob Trugman Salon, and the bridal salon. So that it's not blighted, because otherwise we wouldn't be here. And the redevelopment of those three little properties, 711, Trugman, bridal salon, is really not something that needs, necessitates the scope of a redevelopment plan. So those are the two things.
Okay, thank you. So Sub District Four is not even in the designation. The redeveloper, and actually, none of the redevelopers that we spoke to were interested in Sub District Four, so it's not on the table, but. Yes, I understand that, but I'm just clarifying that it's not something that's subject to what we're discussing in terms of the redeveloper that we've designated. And the answer to, could we go back to, the question was, could we go back to the redevelopment, undo the redevelopment plan? You know.
I think that's something that the finance committee is going to look at.
Not whether we are going to get rid of the redevelopment.
No, but they're going to look at, no, no, but they're going to look at the financial aspects of this whole project and assess, and assessment of the property and all that kind of thing. So I, and I don't, you know, I would like, on the second point, I would like council to discuss the resolution. Not now, but.
Yeah, no, we're not going to discuss it now. We obviously have to talk to our attorney about that.
Right.
And John Miano disapproved.
You can't, you can't talk.
People who are watching TV, Ms. Peron, can't hear you when you speak from there. So, and it's important for the public record that people be able to hear.
Okay, are there any other comments from members of the public? So if there's no one else, I'm going to close the public comment period. Okay, and we'll move on to, the next thing is an ordinance for introduction, council member Vartan. Oh, you have to read it, yes, of course. Sorry, Madam Clerk. I'm getting tired.
I.D. number 9938, bond ordinance funding an emergency appropriation, providing for the local unit's allocable share of the unfunded portion of Phase One of the flood mitigation facilities project of the joint meeting of Essex and Union Counties by and in the city of Summit in the county of Union, state of New Jersey, appropriating $2 million, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $2 million in bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Go ahead, council member Vartan.
Thank you, council president. This is a bond ordinance for the purpose of funding the emergency appropriation that provides for Summit's share of Phase One of the joint meeting's flood mitigation facilities project. It seems like we talk about this at almost every council meeting, so I'll give a quick recap of the situation so far. The joint meeting is our wastewater collection and treatment facility and is one of the oldest examples of shared services in the state. In 2012, the flooding from Superstorm Sandy threatened to shut down operations of the facility, which would have been devastating. The joint meeting went out to bid on a multi-phase flood mitigation project. Summit has taken steps to fund our share of the first several phases. Due to the pandemic, delays in the State Office of Environmental Protection, and rising costs, the lowest bid is much, much more expensive than anticipated. So Summit and all of the other municipalities involved must increase their share of the funding. So in a resolution last month, Summit approved emergency appropriations for that purpose. The ordinance we're introducing tonight is the actual bond ordinance to fund Summit's increased portion of the project, which is $2 million more than needed, and 90% of this cost is expected to be reimbursed by FEMA. There will be a hearing on this ordinance on November 1st at our council meeting. If that ordinance is adopted, this ordinance is adopted, there will be a resolution on November 14th to end the emergency that is related to this. So a couple more meetings talking about this, unfortunately. I move to introduce the ordinance.
And I second it.
Are there any, right, just roll call, please.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Harrison?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Okay, so moving on to resolutions, we have a few finance resolutions. Council member Vartan.
Thank you, council president. This first one is number 9906. This resolution authorizes a two-year contract extension for walk-in hardware supplies with Summit Industrial Hardware. The term of this contract is January 1st, 2023, through December 31st, 2024, and it is not to exceed $60,000 per contract year. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Ms. Members of the public?
Yes, thank you, council president. This is number 9902. This resolution authorizes the establishment of a procurement card program and adopts policies and procedures for the use thereof. The main reason for doing this is to allow for better internal controls to start. Only the qualified purchasing agent and the chief financial officer will have access to these cards, and I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then we've got a related one, and resolution number three.
Yes, thank you, council president. This is number 9943, and this authorizes the execution of a contract with Bank of America to authorize the use of procurement cards. This is the bank that was awarded the state contract to provide P-cards to state agencies and other cooperatives, and I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Are there comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And, okay, motion carries, and now we've got the last-minute add-on resolution. Council member Vartan.
Yes, thank you, council president. This is a resolution from the floor, authorizing the removal of Mount Olive Temple for the United Holy Church of America, located at 217 Morris Avenue, from the upcoming tax sale. In 2019, the property was improperly conveyed to a third party, therefore triggering a chain of events that included the removal of the property's tax-exempt status, then the assessment of property taxes. However, the property continued to function as a not-for-profit religious institution, and the deed was subsequently corrected. In September of 2021, tax-exempt status was restored, and now the action we take tonight removes the property from the city's upcoming tax sale slated for October 27th, 2022. I want to thank the tax assessor, Tim O'Connor, our legal counsel who advised us to take this action, and our finance team for their diligence and attention to this matter, and I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now we're moving on to capital projects. The first item on the capital projects agenda about the affordable housing action, we are going to push that to November 1st so that the resolution can go on the public packet and can be a discussion item at the council meeting on November 1st. So we'll move on to.
I have a question.
Come on up, Ms. Gagnon.
In regards to that meeting, I've emailed through you, council president, with Mr. Vartan several times about this, because I know that's a hot topic, the affordable housing. Is that going to be a presentation from affordable housing on that day?
No, that will be, there's a specific resolution having to do with litigation about the affordable housing program in the state and whether we want to get involved in that litigation or not. So that'll be.
That's not, that's not a presentation.
It's not Summit-specific.
It's not the presentation you were referring to?
No.
No.
Through you, council president?
Through you, council president, no, this is a, this is a different thing that we would have to consider that is related to affordable housing, but is not sort of.
the affordable housing in, program in the state, and whether we want to get involved in that litigation or not. So that'll be-
That's not, that's not a presentat-
It's not Summit-specific.
It's not the presentation you were referring to?
No.
No.
Through you, council president?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Through you, council president. No, this is a, this is a different thing that we would have to consider that is related to affordable housing, but is not sort of the general update that I'm hoping we will still have.
Okay. So the general update that you're referring to, do you think you can let us know when that is, so everyone can?
Once we have a schedule, yes, we'll let, we will, it will be, it will be on the agenda as a presentation.
Okay. So when there's something that says resolution for affordable housing, that's not it?
That is not it.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
And we'll, excuse me, we'll make sure that through communications office, once we get that date, we'll-
That would be great, because I think everyone's really interested in affordable housing all of a sudden.
And it's really confusing. It's really complicated.
It is confusing. And I think you explaining those three different housing and not being part of affordable housing explains a lot, because that's, I think, that everyone thinks that is affordable housing here, because it is, but it's not part of our agreement.
It is, but it's not for the state.
So thank you for clarifying.
Sure.
And through you, council president.
Yes.
We actually have this meeting annually, and it doesn't get any more readily apparent to us. We have, we talk about affordable housing and all the rules that go along with it annually, and it is a very confusing set of rules and responsibilities. So we do this annually.
It's February, it's February, right?
I believe.
February, yes.
Yeah. Because when I first came on in 2019, I remember that was the first time I heard it, and then I heard it again in 2020, and I was like, just, it's a, it's a very complex, multi-year litigation and monitoring. So absolutely stay tuned.
Yep. We're, this is, we're actually not, you can come up, Ms. Hamlet, we're not actually-
Oh, this is a similar question.
Oh, okay, fine.
Around affordable housing, around that, if it's going to be covered. I was just making, I was just wondering if it's going to be covered. It seems like Ms. Harrison has a really good handle on it, but are we going to educate during that same meeting what our current, fully-developed Summit community looks like now, in addition to when we accomplish those units? So for instance, how much acreage do we have right now? Does anybody have that answer? Because I kind of know what it is, but-
I've got it in my head.
How much acreage?
How much acreage do we have right now for affordable housing currently?
That's, that's part of this calculation that's done.
2.34.
2.34 what?
Acres.
Acres?
Yes. My point is, it's not always evolving. Summit's fully developed, so I was just hoping that maybe during that presentation, we could, we all want affordable housing. Of course, we want to make that a priority, but I just want to make sure we, when we have that meeting, but it sounds like that's not the same meeting.
But it depends, though. Sometimes Fair Share Housing can say that you should have an overlay zone on your golf course, and they could count, but they're, it's so subjective, their rules, and I don't mean disparage a hard-working group of people, but it's very subjective, and we're not going to develop the muni into affordable housing, but that doesn't mean they wouldn't like us to. So, so it's really complicated, and we definitely want to talk to us, we'll have our attorney here, have as much research and information as possible.
Okay. Perfect. Thanks, mayor.
Okay. So now we're moving on to capital projects number two. Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, council president. This is ID number 9933, to accept the donation for a Village Green bench dedication. Former Summit mayor Jordan Glatt and Bridges founder Jeffrey Warden and friends are donating funds to dedicate a bench on the Village Green in memory of former Summit council member Judy McLendon, who passed away earlier this year. Judy McLendon was an active member of the Summit community in addition to her work serving the city on common council in the 1980s. In short, Judith Locke McLendon was a force for good. The Department of Community Services is happy to accept this donation to honor her memory. I move this resolution.
I second the motion. Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from the public? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now we'll move on to law and labor, and councilmember Harrison, you've got one resolution.
Yes. Thank you, council president. I move resolution ID number 9948, to authorize extension of sick leave with pay for a Department of Community Services Division of Public Works and Roads unit. And we had this conversation in closed session, and employee is undergoing surgery. We wish that employee a speedy recovery. The employee has the time available, so I put on the motion to approve the extension for leave.
And I second it.
Okay. Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now we have one safety and health resolution. Councilmember Levine.
Thank you, council president. As discussed in closed session, we're declaring a vacancy for a police officer due to a resignation.
I second.
I move to adopt this resolution. Sorry. Thank you. I'm excited to move it.
Yes, okay. Thank you. I second. All right. Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So now we're moving on to the consent agenda. We'll take the whole agenda and vote on it as a whole unless anyone would like to speak about something specific. So do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now we're on to council members' comments and new business. Does anyone have anything they'd like to say? Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, council president. I would just, I'm pleased to report that the installation of the pedestrian bridge and bicycle bridge over Morris Avenue is scheduled this Saturday, October 22nd. This bridge will provide a link between the already completed Phase One of the Park Line and the remaining mile plus, which will be connected to Bryant Park. This is a true milestone in the creation of one of the only new parks in Summit, which I would say is in a decade or two, and I, I'm excited about this. As I sat here at the, on the other side of the dais a couple, like, 10 years ago, to me, it's a huge accomplishment, and a big thank you to everyone on this council that has done incredible work, council members, Rabino, who did work previously. But I wanted to say a big thank you to Al and Lucy Lord, who generously is making this bridge a reality. So I just wanted to say that tonight.
Okay. Thank you for sharing that. It's very exciting. Is that when the crane comes and drops the bridge down? Is that going to be in the middle of the night, or do we know when?
I don't, well, that's a good question.